Good afternoon. Well, this has a reverb to it. Turn it down a little bit. And can you turn off the light, this light, please? Good afternoon. My name is Susan Adams. I'd like to welcome you to our February 27th meeting. As mayor, it's my privilege to welcome you on behalf of the city council. This is our fourth meeting. We'd like to begin by inviting you to stand for the land acknowledgement. Do I need that thing on there? Okay. City of Rona Park. Oh, boy, I had this memorized the other day. Now, I've been so distracted, I can't even remember what I was supposed to say. Yeah. Oh, here we go. The city of Rona Park acknowledges that indigenous peoples are the traditional stewards of the land. Let it be acknowledged that the city of Rona Park is located within the traditional homeland of the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria comprised of Coast Mewoc and Southern Pomo peoples. Thank you. To begin our meeting, in order to establish a quorum, we'll ask Elizabeth Machado, the clerk this evening, to call the roll.
Councilmember Samborn?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Elward?
Here.
Vice Mayor Judichay?
Present.
Mayor Adams?
Here, thank you.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you very much. I think I'm off tonight. What do you think? We are joined on the dais also tonight by our city manager, Marcella Pietra, and our city attorney, Michelle Kenyon. And Marcela, if you'd like to introduce members of your senior staff who are here, that'd be great.
Of course. Thank you, mayor, and good afternoon, members of the council. So we have, let me start off with Paul Cotter, our IT manager, Kyle, who always sets up for us, makes sure that everything is working, Kyle LaSavero with our IT. Actually, we have Mickey Seldes with the Anamo Shelter. That's great. And then I think I see Alicia Judichay in the back, and then Director of Human Resources, Jamie Cannon, and our deputy chief, Aaron Johnson, and Director of Public Safety, Chief Meadows. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and invite Vice Mayor Judichay to lead us, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to ask the city attorney, we are not through with our closed session. We don't have anything to report out yet.
So you will say that we will be continuing that until the end of the meeting?
Okay, we'll continue that, and then adjourn to closed session after this meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. For presentations, 5A is presentation from Kelly Vassibbo, Community Engagement, Vice President, Sonoma County Tourism regarding Sonoma County industry tourism status. Welcome, Kelly, to the dais tonight, and her gift, or her guests, if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Thank you. So Kelly Vassibbo, Vice President, Community Engagement, Sonoma County Tourism, with me tonight. I have Brian Markey, who is the Chair of Sonoma County Tourism's Board and the General Manager of the Doubletree, and then Claudia Vecchio, our President and CEO. And actually, I'm going to be turning the presentation over to Claudia. I do appreciate the invitation for us to present, and it started with a presentation I made at the Mayor's and Council Members Meeting back in October, and very much appreciate this council's support of our industry. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Good afternoon, evening, everybody. We're thrilled to be here and appreciate this opportunity to talk to all of you. I will just recognize Lisa Orloff, who with the chamber, certainly a great partner for Sonoma County Tourism, and we could, you know, she just does so much for this place, and we so appreciate that. So, we have 10 minutes to talk about something that would really take about 10 hours if we were to talk through this entire thing, but I just wanted to kind of give you an overview. A lot of people are talking about the fact that tourism is down in Sonoma County. You're seeing it not only in the hotels, but in restaurants and retailers and other places. There just is not, people just haven't come back like they have in the past. And we raise our hand and say, we absolutely recognize this. We're doing a couple of things to try and bring things back, but I just wanted to kind of showcase some of the initiatives and some of the ways that we as an organization, because that is our mission, to drive overnight travel into Sonoma County. So, for us to be successful, we need our partners to be successful, and that's incredibly important. So, this is an eye chart, and I understand that, but if we look at the month-over-month percent change, the top bar is through this Smith Travel Report, the STAR Report. It's a fairly reliable, although not completely comprehensive overview of Sonoma County and our tourism industry, but you'll see, the gray line is the year-over-year, and we are significantly below where we were. We came out of the pandemic in 2022 with a record year. We kind of have that as a, it's not really a benchmark, but, I mean, we came out soaring, and it was extraordinary amongst all destinations, an extraordinary recovery out of COVID, but we have since really been trying to regain our foothold. And so, we are starting, we see some ups, we see some downs, but we really have a lot of ground to make up. This chart below, and of course, it's in your packets, so everybody can see, you can see Rona Park. And Rona Park is, and I have to say, amongst the municipalities that we track, the furthest down. And the reason it's the furthest down is in the revenue per available room and the average daily rate. So, Sonoma County is not a luxury destination, per se, but the rate really soared after COVID. Now, things are coming down. So, I just want to point out that we have tremendous partners in Rona Park, but we do need some really smart revenue management to occur in this area, so we can help build that rate back up, build the value of the brand back up, and start getting revenue into the city coffers. So, that's something we are very definitely looking at, and certainly work with our partners, great partners, like Brian at the Doubletree. So, because of all this sort of volatility in our industry, we said, okay, what the heck is going on? We made a lot of assumptions. There was assumptions that people were all going to Europe. Well, in fact, everybody went to Europe. That is true. But we were wondering if our, you know, what are the assumptions? So, we did a non-visitor study. We do a lot of studying of people who actually come, but we said, okay, why are people not coming? What's changed in Sonoma County? And the fact is, nothing's really changed. This is the methodology, so you can see that I'm not going to, yeah.
Just pull the microphone a little closer.
I can pull me a little closer, probably. That's the way to do it. Doesn't give me all the hand moments, but that's all right. So, we did do, we worked with a research company to do this non-visitor study, and we studied 800 respondents. So, that's a pretty good return, 400 Californians and 400 outside of California. And we asked, and we came in with some assumptions about the costs of travel, about whether or not San Francisco was having an impact on travel. Was our messaging, we really have leaned into responsible and destination stewardship, where we, it's too much finger wagging about what we were trying to ask people do while they were here, but we went in with a whole bunch of assumptions, and we really came out with the fact that it is, as much as anything, it's an awareness issue. People still don't really know what Sonoma County has to offer, and we all are surprised by that, because, you know, we think this is the most remarkable place on the planet, but there's still a lot of people who don't know that. And that's a marketing initiative, and we absolutely understand that. But you can see also, San Francisco's problems are impacting us. The perception of San Francisco and the media is impacting all of the North Bay, but something we've talked to the people that San Francisco travel all about. So, I mean, we could go through all of these travel choices, but you can see that awareness, San Francisco, and the winery issue will come in here in a second. So, as I say, low awareness is a key indicator. Economic climate, people are nervous about their capacity to spend, and are spending it on other things, but not enough for us to think this really is impacting us. There are some high costs around, the perceived high cost of visiting Sonoma County have deterred some visitation. The assumption we made about international travel didn't really play out, and I'm just racing through these, but, as I said, the San Francisco's urban woes are a challenge for us and something that we are working with San Francisco with. We also ask about the winery experience, because we've heard a lot from guests that they are frustrated that they can't get reservations, or that there isn't just walk-ins, or that it's expensive now, and it didn't used to be. But we still see that Sonoma County is a desired wine destination. You could see second to Napa, and not that far behind Napa, but against all these other wine regions, and some of these I'd never ever heard were even wine regions, but they did pull them out. So, you can see that winery and the winery attraction continues to be a key source of visitation for Sonoma County and the rest of it, enjoying the scenic beauty, wine tasting, sampling diverse wine again, chance to visit the limited edition wineries. This is what they want when they come to the winery. So, we also ask them, when you're in Sonoma County, what are you looking for at these winery experiences? And this is the kind of thing probably not surprising to anybody, but these are what they pulled out. We did find, and thankfully, that our responsible travel message wasn't a turnoff. People do like that. They do want a place that fills those values, that responsible and sustainable travel value. And we did see that our ads were not a problem. But then, so how then are we going to approach this? And I just wanted to cover very quickly our Discover Your And. You can't really see the little ampersand in this particular slide, but there's an ampersand over there. And it really does look at the key travel trends that are happening with regenerative travel wellness. This whole thing that people want these experiences, these bucket list sort of merit badge experiences, and we're working with our partners to try and create more of those. Agritourism, luxury, redefine, search the lesser known. Everybody wants to do something that they're the only ones on the block to be able to do. But it really is that combination of unique immersive activities and unexpected experiences. We have campaigns in market right now. It goes to the end of April. Key markets, mostly, most of those are those that are direct flight markets. I will tell you, as we're looking at the performance of this campaign, we're going to really bring that in, take out some of those further away markets, and focus in on our bread and butter markets in Los Angeles and up to Bay Area. This is some of the campaign creative. You can see the sort of play on words with treat yourself and re-treat yourself. On the business development side, our groups are doing pretty well in the market right now, but we do do a number of outreach activities within the U.S. and key markets around the world. We also have a Sonoma County Tasting Pass. So, then, the kind of the last part of this, we have, we went out on a, we embarked on an effort to try and bring a convention center into Sonoma County, really thinking that as part of our master plan, that was going to be a key driver for kind of a number of good reasons, to balance out seasonality, to balance out the weekday versus weekend visit, to bring more business travelers into the area. So, we're working through that, and we appreciate everybody's interest in that program. We're still so very early in that program. A lot could happen between now and the time we even know if that's a go. So, it's really important for us to continue to talk about Sonoma County, all of our partners, as much as we can kind of coalesce around the messaging of Sonoma County being a wine destination, but all these extraordinary things to do above and beyond that. We're going to take a more promotional approach. We're going to lean into the brand. The brand, life opens up, has been really well received, leaning into that. But it really is a group effort, and those who say, well, Sonoma County Tourism needs to do it on their own, it really has to be all of us together, working together. So, that's it. Is that 10 minutes? How did I do?
You can take a deep breath. You did just fine. Thank you. I thought, I wanted to interrupt you and say, there's no trapdoor. You're okay.
Well, I wanted to stay by my time period, but
Well, thank you for
I mean, there's a lot that we're doing. We're in, we're not in a great place, and I just want to say, we know we're not in a great place, but we're going to do what we need to do to shift and to create opportunities for our partners to drive business, hopefully in a way that helps us move the needle.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just invite members to ask a question, but beforehand, I want to just have Brian come up for a minute. Yep.
Uh-oh.
Right there. It's fine, yeah. We're in the good fortune of having Brian, who's the manager of the Doubletree, be the president of this organization this year, and I think that is kind of a feather in our cap. We're very pleased to have you in that shot there. And if you just want to make any comments and follow up what she's had to say, then we'll maybe ask you both questions if we can.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. I take, when I got here almost three years ago, I take great pride in really working with communities, and especially seeing the difference that Rona Park has made. And I have to commend all of you that's on this committee right here, because for the past couple of years, I've been quiet. I've always watched, and I've seen you all, different parts and different roles, and to see where Rona Park is right now compared to even three years ago is huge. I will say, Claudia, her team, obviously, Matt Kelly and Claudia has a team of other vice presidents, whether it's business development, marketing, so on and so forth. They are collaborators with our county, and I have to tell you, one of the things they said is, it is great working with Rona Park, because they understand, and you work together with Sonoma County Tourism. There's so many other towns that will not be mentioned that it's just like this, and it's like, we can't get anywhere. So, thank you for that. I look forward to being the board chair and really moving our county in the right direction, because we can only go up from here. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much. All right. You can just pause there if you have any questions. Questions and comments? Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't, I didn't have any questions after you explained one of the graph points there, and I do love all of the analytics that are provided by the tourism group. Your analyst does a great job of just digesting some pretty different ways of looking at things. Yeah, so thank you for that.
I will say, through the analytics, we are seeing, we have a future pacing report, and the good news is that we are pacing better as we get into April and May, which is our high season, and we should be, but things are going to start to pick up, and we're glad to see that. It looks like it's even going to be above last year, which it needs to be, but I think things are going to pick up.
Thank you.
I apologize if I missed. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Very well put. I might have missed. Are you guys seeing anything or knowing more about the trend of, like, sober activities? I know that there's, I can't recall if it's in Washington State, but they're going to open their first bar that's fully non-alcoholic. I know that some of the companies are providing those options, but at one point, I was like, oh, that's a lot of alcohol, and not everyone is over 21, and not everybody drinks. But I'm just curious if you guys have seen a little bit of a change or heard a bit more on that.
Absolutely. This, because we asked the question about wineries, that's why we got that, but there was just an article, it was in Travel and Leisure, it was a very big outlet, and I'm happy to forward that to you, about a sober trip to Sonoma County, because that sober, what we're calling sober curiers, or that non-alcohol, yes, that is very definitely a trend, and I know we are seeing some businesses open for that very purpose. You're 100% right, which is why we talk about wine and, and it's about the outdoor activities and, you know, zip lining and going, and plus, you know, all the family activities there are to do in Sonoma County, which is a surprise to people sometimes, and that's a story we love to tell, too.
Yeah, especially, I mean, we've got great pickleball courts here, so if anybody's listening, wondering, got pickleball, Green Music Center, all of the above, Foxtail.
Exactly. You're 100% right, and that's the fun and the challenge of our jobs, because if we were just a wine destination, like, you-know-where, it's a lot easier message, and sort of that's why they own that brand. It's easy to own the category when you own that one thing. When it's so diverse, that's really what's fun, but it also, it's a much more complicated marketing message, and you have to have particular, you know, really salient messages for all these different audiences, and that's what makes it a little more challenging. So, 100% agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Elward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any question, but just thank you for the presentation. It really gives us, me personally, other ideas, too, to have, especially when I have people from out of town come. A lot of time, we think that we know the area we live in, but this is a lot of resources and things to do around, so thank you.
There is. There are a lot of resources in sonomacounty.com. Super simple. That's our website, and there's just a wealth of information on there, too.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. So, thank you very much for the presentation, and of course, Rona Park will always remain a business-friendly and a friendly city in general, so we appreciate those comments. I will note that ferry travel on the Golden Gate Bridge is up 40% in the last year or so, and that SMART is operating at about 125% of projections. And so, now really the focus, you know, turns toward the whole notion of eco-friendly traveling, and it would be nice to see the Tourism Association not only get on that bandwagon, but also reinforce it. In other words, I think that this, what we need to focus on is, okay, we get them on a ferry, and we get them to Larkspur, and then we get them up on the train, we get them up into all of the areas in Sonoma County, and what can we do as a community to advocate for last mile delivery? We've got the greatest performing arts center in North America with the Green Center at Sonoma State University. We have the largest entertainment complex with the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria, and so what can we do to get folks up, you know, the 101, not only that, off the 101, get them up into Sonoma County, and then get them to where they need to go? And I don't know what that partnership looks like, but I think that Sonoma County Tourism definitely needs to have a seat at that table and needs to advocate for that, you know, moving forward. So, we have a lot to offer here in Rona Park, and, yeah, so I just wanted to kind of just, you know, make those comments, and thank you very much for your hard work, and we appreciate your partnership with the chamber as well.
For sure. So do we. And I would just say that we couldn't agree with you more. We've been in conversations with Eddie Cummings and with the Smart Train folks, and that last mile is super important, but know that we are one of the leaders, actually, in the world in sustainable travel, and for getting people to protect and preserve their, that destination that they visit. We have partnerships with Kind Traveler, partnerships with Leave No Trace. We really have positioned Sonoma County as a place that is welcoming and open for responsible travelers. It's in our mission and our vision, and our board has embraced this idea of being careful when you get here. So, we couldn't agree with you more, and we are working on the Smart Train integration, for sure.
Claudia, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We feel like we're part of what you're trying to do.
Absolutely.
And I think that's one of the reasons why you feel a connection to the city of Rona Park, willing to help you and listen and do what we can. As I said before, we're especially proud of Brian for being the president of your organization, and look forward to a lot of success coming our way. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is item 5B, presentation from Jack Anderson and Mitch Marshall. You gentlemen want to come up to the dais here. Co-owners of Illuminate Sober Living regarding a new men's sober living home in Rona Park. The reason why I invited Jack and Mitch, they can introduce themselves and give us a little bit of a presentation, is they've got something going in Rona Park here that I think is fabulous, and they may be able to help us with some folks who are in the bath landing and may be ready to come up a step. So, go ahead and take it away, introduce yourself and your friend there.
Thank you, mayor. My name's Jack Anderson, in council. Thank you for allowing us to be here. This is something that I've never done before, so forgive me if I let out a bunch of ums and or uhs. There's number one. So, my name's Jack Anderson. My business partner here, his name's Mitch. We started Illuminate Sober Living back in January. The biggest reason why we wanted to come up to Sonoma County is we both got sober initially down in Marin about eight years ago, and we quickly noticed there was a large disparity of treatment and other health options for people that are looking to get sober down in Marin compared to what is up here. So, we just put our heads together, and we decided, you know what, we have to open a sober living environment up here in Sonoma County. So, there's probably plenty of you that are curious about what a sober living environment is. We're a form of transitional housing for people that are primarily getting out of a treatment center and/or detox. We're a key stepping stone in allowing people to maintain sustainable sobriety. There are far too many people that enter 30, 60, 90-day treatment center. They go and restructure their entire life while they are there, and they, when they're done, they're like a newborn baby. They're learning, they see the world in a whole new way. They're learning how to walk again, and all of a sudden, once they get out of treatment, it comes time to go home again, and they go back to their normal life of what they were doing before, whether that's moving back in with mom and dad, moving back in with the wife and kids, going back to that very stressful job, whatever it may be. And because they went to rehab and they go back to their normal life, they're expecting a different result to happen. And I'm sure most of you know, when something bad happens and you don't do anything different, and you're expecting a different result, it doesn't really end up well. Nine out of 10 people that enter a treatment facility relapse. It's bound to happen. But the key piece of our puzzle here is we provide a house that not only holds people accountable, but it provides a sense of structure for people to learn how to live a new sober life. We have a certain set of rules that people learn to do certain activities every day, whether it's cleaning your house, making your bed in the morning. My business partner Mitch will go into a deeper dive into what all those rules are, but our biggest thing here is, we really feel our service that we provide can be a huge benefit up here in Sonoma County, especially Rona Park. Biggest thing, our target clients, our house right now is strictly all male. We do have plans for expansion here in the near future. Probably in those plans, we'll be opening one or two women's houses, because those are desperately needed as well. By age, we accept any male client over the age of 18, and we do preferably want to work with people that have the honest desire to try to get sober. Little photo here, that's a photo of our backyard. So, ideally, the house that we have, it's a five-bedroom house. We fit 10 people in there. Everyone shares a room, and it really creates a strong sense of community. Nothing humbles you more than sharing a bedroom with someone again. So, I'm going to pass it off to Mitch. He's going to kind of break down what our house rules are and why they're so important.
Thanks, Jack. Hi, Mayor Adams. Hi, council. Thank you for your time. What sets us apart? We're quality, care, and structure. That is very important to me and Jack. That is the similar experience that me and Jack went through, living together in sober living in Marin, and we really want to take those core values with us. So, having a structured house is the key to sustainable sobriety. We require 72 hours of sobriety to be able to move in. A lot of people from treatment will already be coming, having clean time, so they'll transition perfectly into our house. We require 90 meetings in 90 days. This is AAAN, or any, I guess, what would full circle be?
There's another program called Life Brain, which is a non-secular version of AAAN.
So, we are open to, as long as you're committing to a program and consistently staying with it, we ask for that, 90 meetings in 90 days. That way, you build over time, you're really following in the footsteps of taking initiative, meeting new people out of meetings, getting a sponsor, and you're consistently doing it. House meetings, so we do five house meetings a week. This is great for the community aspect of it. You have, you're very vulnerable in those situations, so you have a group of guys who can really lift you up, who have experience, you can pull from one another. It's really a beautiful thing when you can, at the end of your day, go over how you wanted to change your day and get feedback, and people implementing action with that. We have house chores. So, the house chores really builds character on the repetition and cleaning your house, having your house clean. We like to think, clean house, clean mind. We do tests up to three times a week, so we hold everyone very accountable on testing, to make sure everyone's following the rules and people are accountable. Rooms must be clean all the time. So, our house is structured in a way where it runs itself, where the community runs itself. So, if people are there and have slack, we have others to pull you up. And all this implements into your daily life of living, getting a job, going to school, community service. This is what builds character and gets you ready, so you can leave and have the tools necessary, and the people that you've made connections with in this house. Me and Jack, we've known each other a couple of years. Me and Jack, we've known each other a couple of years, good amount of years and everyone that was in our house, we still have friendships with, we were all at each other's weddings. It's really amazing the bond you, you build and what, and how that it just extends to the community. Move to the next slide. We want to help, so we're coming here today to say, what can we do for the City of Rona Park? Myself, I'm from Sonoma County, went to Montgomery High School, graduated '07 and I've lost a lot of friends in between that time. So, my biggest thing was to help save lives and we want to work, we want to give, give ourselves to people who want to reciprocate that and we can make some change. We want to help the stigma that alcoholics and drug addicts are helpless, alcohol is a disease, we can be helped, me and Jack are living proof of that. We have tools and resources to get people where they need to go. So, as far as just our house, we worked directly with treatment centers, detoxes all across the North Bay, San Francisco, so we're really here to guide people and be a resource in the community. Yeah.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you very much, appreciate your time coming to share these things with us. Any questions or comments? And, and probably if you'd like to maybe give us a business card before you go, that'd be great as well. Emily?
I appreciate that you're doing this. I'm curious if you have a sense of how many, if any, facilities like this are in Rona Park?
So, there, as far as we know, there's one other that is similar to ours, but they're kind of a step up in treatment. They perform more, they're more of an outpatient type of program where they kind of continue therapy after treatment, but they also are allowed to live there. So, we're kind of a step down from that where it's more strictly transitional housing. While there's quite a few up in Santa Rosa, Mitch has lived in quite a few of those himself, we believe that the house that we are providing is a little bit nicer and a little bit, it's, it's more structured and we believe there could be more success in our approach of how, of how we want things to run.
And then my other question is, what resources do you feel like you need from your community, from us?
I mean, we mainly just want to let people know that we're here. The one problem that we've discovered is that there's a lot of people out there that don't know where to turn, so we're just trying to get our name out to anybody and everybody, whether someone here on the council or someone here in the crowd, they have a husband, brother, son, uncle, or even niece, whatever, you know. We, we know a lot of people that work at multiple treatment centers, detox facilities. We don't even, we aren't necessarily looking to get anyone plugged into our house, we just want to make sure we can get people to the help where they need to go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. I did have a couple of questions, I noticed, that you, it stated on there, seventy-two hours sober before entering. How do you measure the sobriety beforehand? Like, are people checking in? How does, how does that function?
So, typically, most people that come into our house, they are getting dropped off directly from a treatment center and/or detox, so we know for a fact that they haven't been using there because they're tested there on a regular basis. We also do drug tests and breathalies upon arrival of the house, so if they were clean wherever they left and all of a sudden they're dirty, through a urine analysis test when they show up to our house, then we have a problem. And then if someone does relapse while they are staying with us, we are working with several different detox facilities around the area to make sure we can get them in to a safe place like that for a minimum of seventy-two hours before they're welcomed back to our house.
Okay. And then another question was, and please correct me if I'm very wrong on this, because this could just be like rumors, but usually you hear that in sober living houses, and you did state nine out of ten tend to relapse, is because people are sneaking stuff in or they're connecting with, how, it looks like you guys are very structured, how are you kind of ensuring or trying to change that statistic?
That's an excellent question. I mean, obviously, there's no ensuring anything when it comes to doing what we're doing. It all comes down to the person and their sole desire to really want to get sober. I mean, for me and Mitch, we hit our rock bottom very early and we almost lost everything and that is kind of what lit the fire underneath us. But as far as our house rules and how we can at least try to ensure people, the drug testing several times a week, that typically is a good scare factor for someone realizing like, oh, this house is going to keep me accountable, I'm not going to get away with anything And it, we're just, we're here to love and support the people that live there. A lot of people our age and older, their families are pretty much done with them and they've been tossed to the wayside and they just feel alone and if they feel that they have someone there to kind of support them and love them until they can love themselves again, that can really make a world of difference in a lot of people's lives.
Thank you, and I also just really want to thank you guys and appreciate for stating that. It's to end the stigma that alcoholics and drug addicts are helpless or just kind of running amok, that it really is a disease. So, congratulations on doing this and taking kind of an ugly and making it something that, like you said, is kind of a light for a lot of people. So, thank you for bringing that to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. It makes me think, because this generation, a lot of them are either on drugs or alcohol or whatever. So, I just wanted to know, and I know you guys are living proof that it can work, but you have to go through a lot. So, how your program, you know, will bring more success, successful stories than problem, than another problem? Because, you know, here you're trying to do something to help people, but at, at the same time, it's a risk you are taking, knowing that even though you both are a successful story, but there's also bigger chance that that could lead to another disaster. So, how you guys are planning to have more successful stories than?
Nine out of ten, yes.
Nine out of ten comes from the treatment.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the not, the nine out of ten people, I should have clarified a little bit better, it's, nine out of ten relapse, or nine out of ten people relapse when they get out of treatment and they don't enter a facility like ours. So, if they go back to their normal life before and don't really do anything about it, that's where that nine out of ten figure comes from, where people, if they move into a facility like ours, there are at least, I don't know, down, down in Marin, there's got to be at least twenty-five different sober living houses. Each one have different rules, but the ideology is the same. And providing a safe space for people to learn how to adjust to a new sober life, because when you do, when you do this, you are starting from scratch. You, what you knew before, you just have to throw out the window because our best thinking put us to where we were. So, we had to sit down and not think for a while and let other people think for us. So, that is what our job is for the people that live in our house.
And do you have like some programs that you're going to help them go through?
Yeah, so we're working with a couple of different places, whether that's through Kaiser or there's another company called Purevita. If people want to continue to get outpatient therapy, we strongly encourage that they do that.
Okay. So, one thing that I noticed, the, your information is nowhere, so.
You don't give her contact information?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's better like even to give people the, your phone number or now that they're watching and also, yeah, to provide something so that people can find you and know where you are.
Yeah, so our website is www dot illuminate soberliving dot com. And as far as council members here and everyone here, we left some brochures on the table over here that has all of our contact information. My name is Jack Anderson, my email is jack at illuminate sl dot com. And any other pertinent information that you might need, our website can answer almost anything that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, it's laudable, you guys have come full circle. I think that's great and now you're paying it forward and I think that's wonderful, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate what you're doing as well. So, just a couple of questions real quick, though. How, how long is the average stay in, in, in one of your houses for the client?
Typically, so we are month to month with everyone. We're not locking in anyone for like a three, six, one-year kind of deal. But I'd say, I mean, for me personally, I was in a sober living house for three, three years total. A year and a half I lived there and then the owner of the sober living house I lived at asked me to manage a house for him. So, I did that for about a year and a half, but I'm, that's a little bit long for most people.
Okay. And once people enter the home and they're accepted into the program, is there a cost involved?
Yeah, so each room that we have has a different cost, so our cheapest room is twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month and our most expensive rooms are sixteen hundred dollars a month. Things that, everything that you can possibly imagine is provided for you. We have brand-new mattresses, sheets, towels, we get food donations from food banks, we have shower supplies, we have toilet paper, paper towels, silverware, everything you may need.
Okay. So, are you just getting referrals from treatment centers or do you get referrals from jurisdictions? If there's a homeless person that's suffering from alcoholism and there's a ability to pay or a voucher could be used or?
Yeah, so, we're accepting anybody that is willing to try to get sober. Right now, we are working with St. Vincent de Paul's.
Okay.
They do scholarship funding for people that are, that are classified as homeless, they can get up to like two to three months of rent paid for and we work with them directly. So, that'll give that person enough time to kind of get on their feet.
Right, and I, okay.
On that kind of fun stuff.
Cool. So, and I guess the goal obviously is to expand the program into Rona Park and, and certainly that would be great. Do we have to change any, I mean, do we currently have this type of homes operating in Rona Park? So, it wouldn't necessitate any type of a zoning change or anything like that? They're, they're ready to go.
Under state zoning laws, they're, they are, they are in Rona Park. They're on, what, Hudes? Is it Hudes you're on?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. That beautiful home you saw, that is the house that they have rented, rented in Rona Park right now.
Perfect. Well, that being the case then, I, I say that I wish you, you know, the best of luck and there's a lovely young lady in the back there who's in charge of housing in our community that maybe you can network with her and, and I'm sure that in any way that the city can, you know, disseminate this information into, you know, the public, I'm sure we're, we're happy to, you know, to collaborate with you and we wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I think we've achieved our goal, wouldn't you say?
Yes, thank you for your time.
Jenna, can you just raise your hand for us? This gal back here, I'll just call her out. We have some people in town who, who we may know, who, who might be able to graduate from Le Bath Landing into your beautiful home there and if you'd like to talk with her now or at another time, that'd be great. Thank you so much for coming.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You're very welcome, appreciate your time. Let's see, we have item number six, SESU student report, but I don't see Taylor Frickman. Okay, department head briefings. You didn't have six or seven for tonight? No.
No, Mayor.
Item number eight, public comment. Our public comment tonight is by, I'm sorry.
Madam, sorry, Mayor. We do have someone from SSU who'd like to speak.
No, yeah, she said she couldn't make it.
Oh, sorry about that. So, Steve Keith, E section, accessibility of in-person meetings is important. Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. Steve Keith from E section. I've always been an advocate for in-person attendance to city council meetings, any, any of the meetings of the commissions and whatnot, but certainly council meetings since I first started coming a few years ago. Also to, to maximize the accessibility of those meetings. The atmosphere in this chamber during the swearing-in of new officers might fade into the ether on its way to a laptop. The parents swelling with pride as their child leads the pledge of allegiance are lost behind the camera. Important things happen here and we should be here for them. That popped in my brain because I, I found myself with an excess amount of time, seeing that the meeting started at three PM. I had to assume that, well, they're in closed session, they'll probably hang out until the, the normal start of the meeting. But then I took note that, that wasn't notated on, on, on the notification and I thought, well, as far as, you know, accessibility and make sure that folks know that they don't have to change and, and get here at three o'clock and who knows when their closed session is going to stop? A simple sentence, something to the effect of, in the event the closed session concludes prior to the normal start of the meeting at five PM, the council will recess until such time. So, then we know that in the rare event that this occurs, the closed session before, simply saying that, pump your brakes, you don't have to squeal down here and, and hang out, just get here at five because that's when it's going to start. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Item number nine, consent calendar. Somebody like to make a motion or is there anybody who needs to recuse themselves?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, are there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote passes five to zero and we move quickly on to regular items, committee liaison and other reports, item eleven A, standing committees, education committee meeting on two fifteen. Mr. Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Rodriguez were in attendance and Mr. Judashay is pointing to Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes, we were able to discuss a bit, we discovered that our meetings have been a fusion of two and that it is supposed to be held by the Cotati-Rona Park Unified School District is the two by two by two. The City of Rona Park has a separate education committee, we've been doing them together, so I will be meeting with the superintendent shortly to see if they have the bandwidth for this year to take it on and if not, then it was decided with those that were in attendance, meaning myself, Vice Mayor, and then we had two council members from Cotati and representatives from Sonoma State University in attendance, that we will probably like share that wealth so that we can continue and talk about how we can all work together for the benefit of our students.
I think that's excellent decision. And just kudos. Would you like to add something?
Oh, just kudos to the staff for unearthing that. It was a lot of discovery that went on there and so thank you to the, to the city clerk for, for doing that.
Eleven B liaison assignments, Rona Park Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting, Rodriguez and Sandburn, which one of you council members would like to tackle that one?
Do you have anything? Oh, I thought you raised your hand, sorry. I have, let me find the email. We, there's a few events coming up, well, one, can't believe I forgot that, our mayor and city manager gave an incredible presentation at the breakfast, was that last week? Last week.
It seemed like last year.
Yeah, exactly. And they gave, yeah, so they gave an update especially with downtown and how we're doing with development just throughout the city, which I'm aware of it, but it was nice to see it all kind of put together and really know how much development is happening in the city. And great mixer as always. There is a mixer tomorrow that is happening and then we have our, there's a networking luncheon on March sixth and the networking breakfast again with Senator Bill Dodd on March twentieth. You can find all that information on the Chamber website or if you're a new business or just interested in learning more, they're great, Lisa's great, award-winning, very happy to have them and the partnership, so thank you.
Number two, Rona Park Cotati Regional Library Advisory Board meeting, we met last Tuesday night and it's interesting because this is the Cotati, the Rona Park Cotati Regional Library and Cotati is very much wanting to have a Cotati library. the Rona Park Cotati Regional Library and Cotati is very much wanting to have a Cotati library. Right? Because this one is so far away. And I, I honor their wanting to do that. Not my words. So, well, I mean, they're talking about some seniors and some young children. They want them to have a local library, so. But that is one thing that we talked about. We do have a, a full slate of people participating on library advisory board now too. So that's helped bring in some new discussion and it's just kind of moving right along. 11C, outside agency and mayors and council members, city selection committee appointment, zero waste. Ms. Sandborn.
I'll give you the highlights. Just the highlights. We approved, Zero Waste Board approved the final budget for fiscal year 2425. We also approved an increase in fees for disposal of organic waste. Let's see here, I'll give you the real numbers. The organics waste tipping fee is going up 775 per ton. So now it's going to be 8975 a ton. And then there's an agency surcharge that's on there. It's going up 92 cents per ton to $9.52 per ton. It's basically because it is more expensive than it used to be. There's a lot more requirements with SB 1383 on how we manage our organics. And so they just want to be able to recover those costs. And we are going to be getting a new household hazardous waste facility in Windsor, which will benefit our entire community and so that will help with that too. And then we received an amazing presentation from the National Stewardship Action Council. Basically, they're trying to gain support for a new Senate bill that will require producers of marine flares to, I know, this is, it gets deep. But basically every boat is required to have flares on their boat. It's a safety issue. But guess what? Those things are like seven bucks to buy and they're anywhere from 185 to 493 per flare to dispose of. And the.
After it's shot off?
No, they, they're like everything else. They go bad. They, you know, expire. So you can only have them, I can't remember exactly the lifespan of one, but basically they become useless and they need to be disposed of and they can't just be, you know, tossed over your shoulder. They have to be disposed of in a very specific way. And our facilities can't do that. They need to send them off. And so the best scenario is that a bunch of facilities kind of pool them together and share the cost of those going out and being disposed of responsibly. But that is, it's a burden that is put on each jurisdiction basically to, to take care of the fees. And so they're trying to put this back on the producers of those. And at the same time.
Like bottles, recycling bottles. You sell them, you recycle them.
Yeah, because they're not like 500 bucks each. And they don't explode. So all that to say, you know, Zero Waste Sonoma, of course, is going to be a supporter of that bill. And it would just put the responsibility back on those producers. There have been other bills that they've passed that have done similar things around recycling and plastics and, and other household hazardous materials and how those should be disposed of. You know, think like mattresses, carpets, things like that. So this is not new. In fact, there are other, there's another state, Vermont, did something really similar. And so we want to do a model ordinance here that will have a similar effective impact. So I learned a lot. I don't know how people sleep at night knowing these things, but I'm very grateful that there are people out there that are managing this for, for all of us, for all our benefit. Other highlights, Zero Waste staff, a member, Sloan Pagal, was selected to participate in a panel at Sonoma State that's coming up on March 7th. And it's all about plastics. I'm interested in that, so I'm going to be going. There's also going to be a repair fair. I don't know if any of you got to go to this. It is way fun, but it's going to be at the Rona Park Library. It's going to be on March 23rd, 10 to 1. And basically start thinking about things you have that are broken and you can't get rid of them because you're like, I'm going to fix that. Can you bring it with you to the library? And there are volunteers that are, that are skilled in fixing a variety of things. When I was there, I saw them fixing lamps, mending quilt. I had someone help teach me how to fix a very specific bag that I had. And I got my knives sharpened for free, all of them, all of them. So it was very valuable. Anyway, it's put on by the, in partnership, Zero Waste with the Reuse Alliance. And I highly recommend going. It fills up fast. If you have a particular skill and you would like to sign up to volunteer, they are definitely taking volunteers because the outpouring of support from the community was, I mean, not surprising, but there, it was a full fair. So they did a clothing swap, things like that, and I highly recommend you go if you can. And lastly, on the freeway, on our beautiful Rona Park billboard, you're going to see a new campaign that's launching from Zero Waste and it is about reducing the amount of plastic and other trash that end up in our organic stream because we know we could all do better. So you'll see a little education piece on that there.
Thank you. Mr. Judashay, would you like to do 11C, item three? And then I'll close off with 11D and 11C, number two.
Okay. So that's Golden Gate Bridge? Yep, it's still there. People are crossing it every day. What's up?
Newsflash.
Yeah. But in all seriousness, structural deficit over the next five years is about 220 million. The one-time federal funding is starting to run out. There has been a long-range strategic plan that has culminated and an action plan. Part of this will be to raise tolls over the course of the next five years. One of the proposals calls for raising it 50 cents a year over the next five years. That will generate about $130 million in revenue. And then saving the other part through efficiencies and service cuts, et cetera, et cetera. However, we do continue to bring back service as the routes warrant it. The buses are the biggest offender right now. They're still down 70% from pre-pandemic levels. The ferries are coming back, as I mentioned during the tourism presentation. And the bridge actually is 85% of normal, but really down 37% during normal commute hours. As I've mentioned, there's 150,000 people less traveling into the city on a daily basis. In other news, we're almost done with our suicide deterrent net. That's been a project that's been going on for the last 10 years. It's almost complete. We will finish it this year, so that's good news. We have started the pre-construction phase of the seismic retrofit and we have identified a vendor to, to, to manage that process. And so we're beginning that process. So look for that to happen as well. And kudos to Director Redoni and Director Chris Snyder for sitting on the pension board with the Amalgamated Transportation Union. And we are making progress in, in writing that private pension plan. So we're excited about that as well. And yeah, that concludes my update.
Thank you very much. Item 11C, mayors and council members legislative committee meeting. Vice Mayor Judashay and I both attended the, the report the night before for 11D reports. League of California Cities North Bay General Membership Division meeting, which included information from the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, also referred to as BAFSA. They gave us quite an extensive update. Councilwoman Sandborn and I were there along with the Vice Mayor and City Manager. And so we heard reports from BAFSA. We heard report from our, each of our supervisors, the one from Sonoma County and the supervisor also from Marin County. We talked about, you know, what kind of things need to happen between now and when it goes on the budget in November. So more, more to follow. But it looks like things are kind of lining up nicely. There'll be two things on the November ballot. One of them, I believe so, one of them is going to be this financing that will bring a lot of money into each city in order for us to work on housing. We still need to do some networking with our supervisors in order to make sure that money kind of comes, trickles down to the end of the row. And the other is to change the, the amount of these bond funds and things need to pass the ballot from 55% down to 50% plus one. So that's going to be kind of exciting in November. So that, that's the end, I think, of our reports. Oh, there was one more thing, noon time breakfast, which you already reported on that, Samantha. Okay. Number 12, communications. Is there anything, any members of council want to bring?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that our Rotary Club, local Rotary Club, will be doing a peace garden cleanup and weed pulling and a little planting. That'll happen at 9:00 AM on, on March the 9th. So not this Saturday, but the next Saturday. So come on out, bring your boots, bring your, your tools and your gloves. And it's at the front of the Burton Rec Center, as you well know. And so hopefully you can join us.
Okay. Anybody else, communications?
I do. And then the following day, March 10th, the Sonoma County Historical Society is having their luncheon. You can find more information online. And actually, and this Thursday, bring it a little bit closer. The North Bay Business Journal is hosting their economic summit, which will focus on AI in the workplace over at Sonoma State. So that seems pretty interesting. So hopefully people can go and enjoy. And tonight, the Sonoma County Human Services Department is having dine-in donates at All the Mary's in Sonoma County. And that is to raise money for the homelessness and at-risk jobs and resource fair that they have. And on March 15th, there will be a women in street art kind of session at Sonoma State. I got to join one for Social Justice Week last week. And so it's a really great kind of thing and just reminding the community that Sonoma State kind of provides that for the community as well and not just students.
All right. Thank you. I did receive a letter from a gentleman who says, I wanted to send you an email of congratulations and thanks. I'd emailed you about a year ago asking when the encampment would be removed from Roberts Lake. You kindly replied saying you were working on it. I noticed last week that it was finally empty. Thank you very much. Signed, a resident from our neighborhoods. And I just wanted to pass that on, not just to council, but to staff, to say that people are noticing. Uh-oh, you're looking at me with that look?
No, I'm just saying.
We have hours to go before that, so just one second here. Is there anything, is there anything for item 12, adding agenda items to future city council meeting agenda? Darn. Public, any other public comments? No, I'm just teasing her. She was in a hurry. Okay. We will be closing this meeting. We will be adjourning this meeting to public, no, to closed session. We will be adjourning this meeting to closed session and we will come back at the end or we will report out upstairs? We'll report out at the next meeting. So this meeting is adjourned to closed session. Should have written it out. Thank you.